Call to order the April 8th meeting of the Wayne County Board of Education. And at this time, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session to discuss confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and A6 and 115C-319 through 321. To discuss confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 115C-402 and to consult with our attorney for the Board of Education in order to preserve attorney's right privilege as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? All right, we are now in closed session. All right, can I get a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
All right, got a motion on the floor, second. All right, all those in favor? All right, on to our next item, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Sanders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Who's the motion by? I'm sorry.
Uh, motion by Ms. Burden?
Second.
Second by Mr. Henderson. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, agenda's approved. Item 3C Superintendent's Proposed Budget. Superintendent and Finance Team.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a privilege this evening to present to you annually as required the Superintendent's Proposed Budget to the Board of Education for consideration. Number of procedures that this process will go through in terms of the development. Moving on through Slide 3, you can see in January, specifically January the 25th, the Board held a budget work session and specifically established three particular points of interest regarding the budget priorities for the upcoming year. The first of which was the establishment of a minimum fund balance of $10 million. As you well know and through my historical knowledge with this particular...
You're on a slide. You mentioned a slide. I don't think any of us have got a...
We don't.
Slides. Is there some slides that we put out?
Not available in here.
It's not. It's not in Word doc.
Okay, Ken's gonna pull it up.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I was plowing right up.
Plowing right in. You were going, going ahead.
There we go.
There we go.
Ken, if you'll skip into... There we go, right there.
Thank you.
In January of this year, specifically January 25th, at the Board's Budget Work Session, the Board established three main criteria points for future budgets. The first of which I think is very important to highlight, the establishment of a minimum fund balance, $10 million. And as you well know from historical perspective, and as I have found to be, not too, too long ago, this district was in a very precarious situation as far as its finances. Through hard work by this Board and several of my predecessors, there has been strong financial stewardship of the county's school system's finances, such that there are surpluses to be realized that can be reinvested strategically into special projects to accomplish really good things for our schools. One of which is the continued investment in safety and security upgrades for each of our campuses, continued investment in campus revitalization, which as you know, due to the constraints in the prior years where funds were tight or nonexistent, a lot of those issues went by the wayside. And now we're playing catch-up with revitalizing a number of our campuses. I would like it to be at a much stronger and brisker pace, but I believe we are, again, being good stewards of the funds that we have and using the money prudently. February the 29th of 2024, I presented an opportunity for our community to greater and more fully and transparently understand our school system's finances so that they do clearly understand where our funds are spent and prioritized within our school system. On March 12th, a joint meeting with the Wayne County Board of County Commissioners was held in which I believe good discussion and conversation was had from each side to mutually understand the needs of each entity. On into Slide 4.
Ms. Rouse?
If you could please turn to page 1 of your book. It provides you a quick snapshot of our proposed budget at a glance. As you know, there are two major components, which are the operating budget and the capital outlay budget. The operating budget covers the daily cost of operating schools and support areas. Primary funding sources of the operating budget are state, local, and federal funds. There are other sources such as impact aid, fines and forfeiture, and special appropriations that add to the district's operating budget. The capital outlay budget covers the annual cost to maintain buildings, manage energy performance contracts, and update infrastructure. The proposed budget is broken down into categories of each funding source and the estimated total expenditures for each category. As you can see, the projections are as follows. State funds at $137,690,970. Local funds at $24,599,814. Federal funds at $18,56,127. Capital outlay at $3,415,000. School nutrition at $11,152,913. And other local funds, um, local fund sources at $6,378,897, which brings us to a grand total of $201,293,721. So what are our drivers for this budget? Well, the main driver is ADM adjustments. For the proposed budget, we use this fiscal school year's launch-in ADM, which was $17,142. This method is different from what we have done in the past. Reason being is that the state has adopted a funding model, which is called funding in arrears. Basically, this entails that BPI shall develop a funding model based on prior-year ADM for implementation in 2024, 2025. A contingency reserve shall be used to fund growth, and no reductions would be made from actual current-year ADM declining from the prior year. Now, the legislators have not identified which one's applicable. The decision should be made once they reconvene for short session, which is the middle of this month. Until the ADM has been identified, we use Mark II, which was October 2023, for this proposed budget. Also, the state initial planning allotment formulas have not been released. We use the 2023, 2024 initial state allotment formulas for our projections. Those formulas are located on pages 14 and 15 of your book. Lastly, the state low-cost funding is a major funding source for Wayne County Public Schools. North Carolina provides supplemental funding to systems whose ability to generate revenue per student is below the state average. The formula is based on several factors, such as adjusted property tax base, square miles in county, and per capita income. We also receive a special provision since Wayne County contains a base of the armed forces of the United States, and our average daily membership is more than 17,000 students. But please note that if the ADM falls below 17,000, then we will not need the consideration of the special provision, and we'll lose funding from this state. All right, now we'll be discussing your budget drivers. Continue the fixed assets, fixed cost increases. And Ms. Rouse has shared certain budget drivers. I will review other drivers such as fixed cost increases. And you're aware that this year, 2024, 2025, and the same year for the biennial budget. Based on what legislators have adopted, at this time, we know that there will be a salary increase of 3% for state employees. We are also preparing for an increase in retirement and hospitalization benefits. There has been some discussion that the retirement percentage would decrease, but for this budget, our projection is at 26%, which is an increase in the current rate of 25.02%. We are preparing for the increase in our insurance premiums as well. These premiums include workers' compensation, car fee insurance, and general liability insurance. Next, the increase is supplement costs. As certified salaries increase, it will increase in the cost of our current settlement. So we need to make, make sure to account for the potential increases in this budget cycle. The last two budget drivers are utility costs and charter school enrollment increases. We have seen a steady incline for both, and we want to make sure that we capture and increase those categories. All budgets are based on the future, and some involve assumptions in doing a budget forecast for the upcoming year. We have listed some areas of uncertainty on Pages 5 and 6 of the budget book and others on this slide. The state budget isn't concerned. Even though we are currently in a biennial budget, any changes made during this upcoming short session can still have an impact. We will be monitoring the general assembly to see what changes, if any, will be made that will impact our overall operating budget. As you do know, we do know that there is currently a 3% state legislative salary increase. ADM enrollment. It is important to forecast a conservative projected ADM for 2024, 2025. In the past, funding allotments were based on the best 1 of 2 ADM of the year, starting with this fiscal school year, funding based on funding in arrears model, which identifies the month in which ADM will be based on calculating state. Next, we have charter schools. Each month, Wayne County Public Schools is legislatively required to allocate funds to local public charter schools. WCPAs cannot fully predict how much funding will be distributed in a given year, and allocations can change based on the school district's enrollment, the school district's total local revenues, and the enrollment of Wayne County students in local charter schools.
Can I ask a question about that? So the $17,192 that we had from the prior year, so if the new STEM school is adding another grade level, we won't be affected by that because we're being funded one year in arrear? Is that how I'm...
That is the assumption.
Okay.
That is the assumption. Under the next topic or next bullet that you see is the school voucher expansion. This is one of the many unknowns throughout the state right now, is the impact it would have on traditional public K-12 schools. As you know, the system for vouchers is offered first to the lowest-income socioeconomic category of parents and students within the state, and then as those slots are not used, the income brackets expand up. What is the unknown is, is just how many individuals will use those opportunities. The going assumption also is for vouchers is that it does not fully cover the cost of tuition at many private schools. Also do remember, many of those schools are not held to the same standards of assessment that traditional public K-12 schools are, but I digress on that particular topic. Also, as you know, all school systems, not just in North Carolina, but all across the country, are bracing themselves for the SER fiscal funding cliff. Because as you know, those funds are not just slowly being phased out, those funds are expiring, thus the use of the terminology cliff that we will all be facing come December 30th, 31st of this particular year. I will tell you that Wayne County has well-positioned itself in terms of using those funds, maximizing the use of those funds in terms of capital facilities, investing them into tutoring services for our neediest students. So I feel like we're in a really good place with where we are with our SER funds. Also, our local revenue sources. As you know, I've been an advocate for looking at ways to move the needle or slice the pie a little more differently towards our public schools. I do realize sources of revenue are finite. But I would like to look at how we can expand on opportunities at funding for our schools, because as you see at the top in the state budget, the state gives a 3% raise, and we continue on with a 2% local increase. You can already see we're already at 1% disparity difference in those categories. Last year, the disparity was even greater, or this year, actually with 4% raises and a 2% increase. So you can see the difference between those particular areas. And we're grateful for state raises. The state has really put a lot of investment and resources into education in recent years. But along with that comes local increases that we face as well in those areas.
Impacting revenue. Students whose parents are active duty or live on federal property, the amount of local tax revenue is reduced. To compensate for this reduction in tax revenue, the Impact Act authorized payments for the school district based on people's residence or the parents' employment on federal property. The number of qualifying students has steadily decreased over the past few years, as well as the federal funding for the grant. Funding is considered non-restricted, so no limitations are required. On Page 6 of your budget book, it describes the pensions, parking, and utility rate increase. Both of these items are assumptions as we project next fiscal school year. The energy management contract is another line item that we have to account for until the debt is paid in full. Later, we will discuss the board priority of making an additional yearly payment for the upcoming fiscal year. As Dr. Richard indicated, local supplement costs, as you know, the state mandates increase because of percentage-based with our supplements, that will increase as well, so we have to make assumptions for that. We are entering into year 2 of the classified salary implementation. This was a board priority back a year or two ago. Last year was our first year implementing the new salary schedule. So we have some forecasting assumptions that we have to make there as we enter a new year with that new 30-step schedule, as well as the state legislative increase. Life salaries. Even though our goal is to be fully staffed and have no vacancies, we assume that we will collect some life salaries next year. Again, this is an assumption as we build our budget forecast for the 24, 25 school year. And then lastly, our board priority, which will be discussed a little later in our presentation.
May I ask a question? And I want to piggyback off of Mr. Flower. We accept students coming in from private schools to go to STEM?
When you say we accept students from private schools...
Do they have to apply?
To go to the, to the STEM school, which is the charter school?
No, not the STEM school, that's charter. Our STEM school on the base.
Worcester.
Oh, Worcester.
Yeah.
If they go through the application process and are selected, yes, ma'am.
So we could have an increase that way?
We do anticipate we'll have some increase because we have increased seats at each of the schools.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. It will not be fully realized, however, this particular academic year. This will be the first year of increasing the numbers of students in those schools.
Okay, yeah.
The slide 8, budget planning for this year, 2024, 2025. This slide represents the budget comparison of benefits as well as salary increases between the fiscal school year and what we firmly know or have projected for the 2024, 2025 school year. As you can see, the social security remains the same at 7.65%. We have projected an increase in retirement benefits from 25.02% to 26%. The hospitalization rate showed a projected increase of $540 from this year's rate of $7,557 to next year's projected rate of $8,097 for each employee. This biennial budget has indicated that there will be a 3% increase for state employees. For those on the state legislative salary scale, they will receive an average of 3%. This is, this is the information that we know as of today. Please note that the legislators will change some of these items when returning from short session later this month. If you will flip back to Page 2 of the budget book, we will learn the local projected revenue for Fund II, Fund VIII, and Capital Outlay. So again, right now, we're just talking about the local revenue sources. It has nothing, have nothing on it for state federal. If you look at the county appropriation for general operating, that $20,586,276 is what we were appropriated this year from the county. We're also receiving a restrictive allotment, county appropriation for Peter Selfness and Whitstable, a lower of $1.4 million. We are projected to receive an increase of 2% for our current county appropriations, which totaled to $411,125. Fines and forfeiture is a revenue that comes in, and it's an estimate, so we're estimating around $500,000 for the next fiscal year. Same thing goes with Wayne County Lake listing and interest income. Again, these are just revenue estimates as we go into next school year. We did appropriate fund balance out of Fund II local for facility utilization for $200,000, which brings us to a new funding request from the county in the amount of $1,484,213 that we would need in order to equate to the total expenditures for that local. Next up, we have our other local sources. I don't have to get through all of them. Kind of know about the county appropriation for Wish, Creative Clubs, NC pre-K, indirect cost rental programs, that is an estimated revenue cost. Same thing for child nutrition. We have the City of Gold World TV section. We do receive some miscellaneous revenues, so we're budgeting around $125,000 of that. Impact Aid and Medicaid, again, is the best estimate at this time for those revenue sources, RTC as well. And then we were appropriating fund balance for two items out of Fund VIII, other local sources. One is for Troist. It was a decision to try to make an additional payment to the Troist debt, and that's around $750,000 from your fund balance, as well as safety and security in campus revitalization in the amount of $1,810,000. This brings us to Fund VIII, other local revenue sources, $6,378,897. Lastly, we have capital outlay revenue, our county appropriation for small project at $2.5 million, our county appropriation for technology at $600,000. The state LAE Finex purchase of school buses, which is just pass-through funds that we receive, estimated amount of $300,000. And then lastly, a local revenue for facility rentals that we estimate to be around $15,000, which brings that total to $3,415,000. Now, please note that we did have specific fund balance appropriations again for Fund II, according to the amount of $200,000 for facility utilization. Fund VIII for the surest payment and other payments to the debt service for safety and security in campus revitalization. And then lastly, our specific local preparation concerns, just to make sure that the 2% that we receive for this upcoming year, and then our new funding request of the $1.4 million. This potential need is based on the current state planning allotments, which do not account for any additional mandated increases in salary benefit costs that may come through the short session.
Next slide discusses again the particulars of the local request maintaining our current operations for Wayne County Public Schools. One of the concerns we have and the headwinds that we're facing could involve a declining ADM, increased charter school participation. You know, it is important to note that between 86% and 87% of school-aged students that live in Wayne County attend Wayne County Public Schools. It is important to note that parents now have more choices and more opportunities than ever before, whether it's at parochial schools, homeschools, charter schools, private schools, the whole gamut of different opportunities. And so it is important to realize those opportunities also present themselves as challenges. The increased charter school participation is somewhat troubling, as I showed you in the data. Charter schools that are in existence in Wayne County perform lower than some of our lowest-performing schools in our district. And yet, we still separate the dollars from our school system to go to fund the operation of the low-performing, extremely low-performing charter schools. The inception of charter schools was that it was giving parents an opportunity, a better opportunity than traditional public schools. Here in Wayne County, the opportunity, I would suggest, by the data, and we all like to look at data, is not a great choice for parents to make for their children. It is my desire for the opportunities that we are seeing in families, our investment in curriculum instruction, and upping the game, if you will, for what we're doing in our schools, that our parents will see the wisdom of returning to traditional public schools.
Can I ask a question real quick? Clarification. That was only two of the three charter schools that we have data on, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
The newest one does not have data yet.
Okay.
But I'm in it to win it.
Yes, absolutely we are.
Under recruitment and retention of staff, as you know, and as the state board just heard just this past week, the retention of teachers in this state is at an all-time high in terms of challenging environment. I believe that the indications were, numbers have not been seen this high in decades in the attrition factor that we're seeing in teachers either leaving the profession or declining to enter the profession. And so the number of vacancies I do not see on the horizon as getting better. All the more reason I talk about becoming more competitive, because we're all fighting for those teachers that are available. And in terms of enticing them, the working conditions, good working conditions, clean schools and environments, and also more competitive pay opportunities with what we're providing locally. Ms. Rouse, do you want to talk about the classified salary schedule?
Um, yes, sir. For the classified salary schedule implementation, you know, just remember that we adopted a 30-step schedule. That's a little something different that was in the past. I think it has provided good reasons to attract our classified employees back to Wayne County Public Schools. Again, with that 30-step schedule, we have the set mandatory increases that that is something that we have to prepare for every year. So it's again part of the local request to maintain our current salaries.
And under that last particular bullet, under fixed cost increases, and I know we've touched on that in different stages already in this presentation, but do remember, I don't know that I've seen a year yet in terms of being senior leadership where those fixed costs have not increased every single year. There's not been a year where the costs have really either plateaued, they have steadily increased in terms of benefit, cost, hospitalization, increase in utilities and insurance, insurance costs in particular are increasing, particularly in the eastern part of the state in terms of hazard insurance and maintaining current supplement with interstate increases that come along. All of those costs and those increases come to us as well.
Now, did we accommodate in our request, our local request, an increase for the classified staff to, for the 3% to... Because we got local paid, so did we, we included that?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure.
And again, just to understand, you know, talk a lot about, you know, Wayne County has this tradition of 2%. If it's a 3% increase, we're automatically behind a percent. So that's, that's that important piece of us, you know, trying to get some realization there of the differences and the challenges that we're seeing.
And my question goes back to classified salary schedule. That's an automatic with this 30-year, from year to year, is an automatic increase?
Yes, sir. Every January, if they have completed the full year of Wayne County Public Schools, they're both, just like the teachers do in like the first few years, they're both.
And is that for all classified staff?
That is for all, except for some like hourly pay child nutrition stuff, majority of our full-time classified staff, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So now we're going to go into the funding options for our board's priorities. As you know, this year, your priorities were safety and security, facility enhancements, sustainability, post-SER funding, as well as employee benefits. You know, we're looking...
as well as employee benefits. You know, we're looking at possible supplement increase for certified staff this past year. Um, and then continue to serve with physical practices and building of fund balance.
Again, the board established as a basis, a minimum of that ten million dollars for the basis for reserve, which I think is extremely wise. Secondly, funds accrued in excess are for one-time expenses. Over the years, I've kind of adopted this, this practice of saying, you know, you can't pay your utility bill out of your savings account month in and month out, or you're going to come to a bad end at some point. Those recurring costs cannot come from one-time funds, because you'll find yourself very quickly backed into a corner. And I know that, and I know this board understands that, which is why really the last couple of sentences I think are very, very important, and I think it's important for the community. Um, because I, I do still hear some rung of the past that come up about the challenges this board faced a few years ago. And I'm, I'm going to very poignantly go back to this statement. The board and the senior leadership have established conservative principles for the prudent expenditure of funds to maximize and prioritize the needs of the district while maintaining fiscally sound balances. Everything, every priority, every expenditure is scrutinized to make sure, number one, is absolutely necessary, but number two, it reaches our maximum potential in terms of our first priority, which are our students and curriculum and learning, what goes on in the classrooms every single day. Under the next slide, Ms. Rouse, I'm sorry, was that yours or mine's?
Acting.
Okay. Under the next slide, you can see we orchestrated this little dance here that we're doing this evening. Under the next slide, under fund balance appropriation, you can see under facility utilization, uh, have likened the phrase, sometimes you have to spend a little bit of money to save, uh, a, a good amount of money, in this case, up to three-quarters of a million dollars on an annual basis recurring, uh, by a, a small one-time investment at this point, which is believed to be in the two hundred thousand dollar range. Uh, I will not say that it will not exceed that, uh, but we are hoping at this point in time will be in the two hundred thousand dollar range for Wista, uh, general movement and a few unknowns in terms of expanding, uh, on the base. We're very proud to say that we are able to expand our footprint on Seymour Johnson. Seymour Johnson has been a great partner in education for our students that participate at Wista. At Truist Debt Service, you have an opportunity to have funds that you have available. Uh, I do make it a priority to pay off debt, uh, to increase and to expedite debt service. And so with this, we'll make an additional annual payment on the Truist note, uh, of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Campus revitalization, again, will continue to be important to us in how our campuses appear, uh, for our students. Again, it goes to teacher morale, uh, campus general morale in, in terms of those investments that we make. I'm also asking this year for one-time appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars. We do have schools that are interested in a pilot program that I've been discussing with maintenance of creating five schools by providing them lawn equipment so that they can go back to the process of maintaining, uh, each of their campuses uh, with their own school lawn equipment. Uh, I do think this will be a better product for us in terms of how our campuses appear, principals working with their custodial teams, uh, to make sure campuses are maintained, um, more so than what our general maintenance teams are able to do. Those guys are stretched beyond belief. Currently, we do not have, guess what they refer to in some cases as a gang tractor with the mowers, uh, that, that can be let down in the back to mow large, uh, swatches of property. Uh, so they're using zero-turn mowers to mow, in some cases, ten, fifteen, twenty acres, and it's wearing those mowers out. Uh, so we're going to start a pilot program that I think will overall better maintain our campuses. Uh, and then, of course, again, continuing, and we all know the current state of the environment in the world of increasing safety and security for our students. That's an important investment, I know for this board, it's an important investment for me that we protect our campuses and fortify them to the extent that they are still attractive places for students to come and feel comfortable and secure, but to also face those harsh realities of what we know could happen, uh, and to prepare ourselves as much as we can through the investment of additional resources on those campuses.
Have you identified the schools that will be involved in this pilot program, as you're speaking?
I know I have a few that have automatically, very quickly, put their hands up that they'd like to participate. Uh, I'm not quite at a point yet where I'm able to share with the board, um, the, the numbers of where we are. I anticipate we'll have more interest in, uh, what we'll have funds in the first year. My ultimate goal is for it to get us to a better place with, with our campuses. I know you've gotten calls, particularly during the summer months, after we have a rain, the grass is high, fields need to be mowed. I know you had some on the right-hand side of Southern Wayne as you're facing the campus. My goal is to get rid of those phone calls and that we're able to weed eat edge below whatever needs to be done so we, we keep our campuses in tip-top shape.
Would you consider going back to that for every school?
I'd like to get to that point eventually, but I know some schools' teams are not there in terms of being ready to jump back into that. Uh, and then in terms of sustainability after ESAR, you know, that's everyone's goal, is to make sure we're not in a situation uh, of where we're caught unaware in terms of expenditures after the ESAR cliff happens. In human resources, Frontline Software, as you know, we're in a term agreement with Frontline. We have made some enhancements with Frontline. We've made some important, um, realizations in terms of maximizing the effectiveness uh, of that particular tool. Under curriculum instruct, and, and instruction, uh, we have made prudent investment in systemic resources for use in curriculum and instruction, particularly in academic recovery. There tends to be a lot of debate in terms of the speed and progress that we're making in academic recovery. I believe this will be a good year for us. And then, of course, in credit recovery for high school summer programs, to expand those options, to continue to keep students on track for graduation. I believe this will also be a banner year for us in terms of high school graduation rates for our schools. And then in terms of support services, uh, local capital outlay funding, continuing to stretch those dollars, roofing projects, H VAC projects, campus, uh, projects in general, um, have been a challenge for us. So we're, again, hopeful for, uh, that local appropriation to help us out in those areas. So as you know, in terms of the next steps for this particular aspect of the budget, the board will review the superintendent's proposed budget request. There will be an opportunity for the public to provide comment, to review the particulars of this budget in this particular budget book. And then the board will move for the adoption of the superintendent's proposed budget at the May sixth Board of Education meeting, uh, realizing any changes that may need to be made at the request of the board, and then submission of the adopted budget to the Board of County Commissioners by the May fifteenth deadline. Happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Not so much a question as it is a comment, um, and that is that, uh, I hope that as soon as we get it adopted, that we can get it to the county. I think last year, we got it over to them, um, right there at the last, the last, uh, legal day that we, that we could provide it to them. So as soon as we can get it to them, as they are in their budgeting process right now with the county, hope to get it to them as soon as possible.
Much agreed, much agreed. My goal is to be way ahead of schedule.
Have there been any revisions since we met with the county commissioner, since the two boards met on this budget?
Not as of today.
All right. Any other questions? All right. No other questions. Thank you, Ms. Rouse, Ms. Bond.
Thank you.
And Dr. Winter.
Thank you.
All right. We are on to item three D, increasing engagement in STEM. I think that's Mr. Yancy.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Winter. Um, I am thrilled to announce that Wayne County Public Schools has been awarded a grant of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars and forty-three cents from P R C two fifty-four, increasing engagement in STEM. This initiative is designed to enhance STEM education across our middle schools, directly supporting our commitment to fostering curiosity, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills among students. A part of this project lies in the procurement of the Smithsonian Science and Technology Concepts for Middle School Kids. These comprehensive, research-backed educational resources will serve as cornerstone for a hands-on, experiential STEM learning approach. By integrating these kids into our existing curriculum, we aim to ignite a passion for STEM fields among our students, encouraging them to pursue further education and careers in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The Smithsonian Kids will be centrally managed at the district level and made accessible to all middle schools through a checkout system. Educational technology specialists and instructional coaches will facilitate the integration of these resources, offering onsite support and training for our educators. The approach ensures that students have the opportunity to benefit from high-quality STEM learning experiences irrespective of their school's individual resources. A key component of our strategy is the professional development of our teaching staff. Utilizing both free online materials and expertise for our district specialists, we will provide comprehensive training sessions. These sessions are designed to equip teachers with the knowledge and skills necessary to effectively use the Smithsonian Kids, thereby maximizing their impact on student learning. The increasing engagement in STEM grant represents a significant step forward in our mission to prepare students for the challenges and opportunities of the twenty-first century. Through this initiative, Wayne County Public Schools aims to not only improve STEM education within our district, but also to inspire the next generation of scientists, engineers, and innovators. We look forward to sharing our progress and successes with more education and broader community as we embark on this exciting journey. As an additional, uh, comment on this grant, um, a tangential topic, which is robotics. Uh, we did receive notification that we were awarded grant from P R C two oh one just a couple of days ago. Uh, that grant will support a first-legably robotics, um, teams at two of our schools to kind of use this as seed um, to, uh, start growing our robotics teams. Um, and that grant was in the amount of seventy thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, so towards STEM, we're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars in grants that are coming to us, uh, over the next several months.
Mr. Yancy, if I could just interrupt for just a minute, I was saying earlier, just today, how proud I was that we've landed that grant. I know my own boys have participated in an F L L program, uh, and it's a great opportunity for kids to get involved in STEM activities, robotics, uh, at an early age. Uh, we already have a very robust program that we actually cooperate with, with SPACE through four H over at Wayne School of Engineering. It has an outstanding robotics program, uh, world-class, and so I think this will bridge that gap in continuing to build those programs, uh, for our students. So tremendous opportunity.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Yancy? Can I ask one?
Sure.
Who, who applied for the grants?
Um, so the P R C two oh one, well, to put it bluntly, it was cooperation between C N I and our EdTech specialists. Uh, they worked together on these grants, P R C two oh one, uh, Christie White took the lead on that, and P R C two fifty-four, our E T S's took the lead on that. But it, it was definitely a walk-in effort between the two of them.
All right. I just wanted to make sure we got recognition to those that deserve going extra mile and trying to get these grant funds. Thank you so much, Mr. Yancy. All right. Is no other questions?
I got a question.
Question?
Based on your presentation, it sounds like this might be optional for, for middle school, or is this going to be some manual, mandatory part to this?
We will provide teachers with the necessary skills they need in order to implement these, uh, kits within the schools. Um, it would be highly encouraged of the principals, uh, to use this to their advantage and, and, and utilize these kits, because they will be really accessible to all our middle schools.
I think it'd be important for us to, to monitor that to see exactly how the schools are doing with that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Mr. Yancy? Thank you, Mr. Yancy. All right, item three E, Infinite Campus. I think that is also you, uh, Mr. Yancy.
Okay. Tonight, I wanted to give a just quick presentation on our implementation of Infinite Campus. Um, so just so we're on the, uh, on the same page, uh, Power School, which we have been utilizing for the better part of a decade, is going away. Um, in its place will be a new student information management system called Infinite Campus. Uh, Infinite Campus, um, is a nationally recognized, uh, S I S system, and we are absolutely excited to be transitioning over to it. Uh, W C P S was selected to participate in phase one of the N C D P I implementation. There are two phases, and all school systems within the state will be on Infinite Campus as of twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, we have been working very closely with the Infinite Campus Implementation Team for the better part of about three months now, um, in order to, uh, make sure that our implementation is smooth and easy. Um, I actually have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow with. Um, our timeline is, uh, fairly, fairly brisk. Uh, from February through July, uh, we will be working on various components of the implementation project with the ultimate goal of being fully operational by July, uh, so that our teachers can go ahead and access and get ready for the school. One of the areas that I do want to talk about with Infinite Campus is some of the benefits. So one of the things that you will notice about Infinite Campus, uh, when you, when you start interacting with it, is that it is fully integrated S I S. Uh, many S I S's have components that you add on to it. Infinite Campus is a fully integrated solution with these components already built into it. So some of the things that we're going to be seeing with Infinite Campus is integrated online registration, integrated messenger products for teachers to utilize to, uh, communicate with home, um, integrated learning management system, integrated online forms, um, and actual mobile app that is a mobile app rather than an app that is not so great, uh, if you ever use the Power School app. Um, a translation module, on-demand training, and finally, an analytics suite uh, that we'll have access to in order to do analytical, um, analytical queries into the data. Um, also, I have included on the last slide, um, the D P I website. That is the clearinghouse for all information as it relates to Infinite Campus. Uh, so you're more than welcome to, uh, take a look at, uh, D P I's website. But rest assured, we are hard at work in implementing Infinite Campus, and we fully expect to be online and operational by July, number twenty-four.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Yancy.
Thank you.
All right. We are down to board action. Item four A, our first item, military, military child update in month of the Military Child Proclamation. We got Ms. Heather Winstead, correct? And our military liaison also. All right.
Good evening, Board. I'm Heather Winstead. I'm the military liaison at Wayne County Schools, February eighth night.
It's Christie Barnes Williams. I'm the school liaison at Seymour Johnson April States.
So April is a very important month to us, is the month of the military child, and we all celebrate together, and we just annually like provide a little bit of an update. So, uh, beginning with our military star, currently Wayne County Public Schools has two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four military connected students, with a percentage of thirteen percent military connection in our district.
And the annual military impact data from Seymour Johnson is about nine, um, million dollars, as well as the drop fee is about over nine thousand. And so these are some of the highlights in the district that some of the, the schools have been doing to help, um, honor and represent some of our military, um, community. So Brother Pioneer, the first picture shows the Veterans Day ceremony that where they honored, um, veterans and military students. So you can see that Southern Wayne High School, um, R T C team came out as well and presented to the children during that particular activity. Um, as well as Middle Wayne Elementary, the picture to the far left and right with the kids holding the boxes, whichever side you're looking at. Um, they had a drop that they, um, donated food and supplies that they collected to. food and supplies that they collected to those in need, as well as the cards in the center is where the Military Scouts Club collects the annual cookie drive. And so we did a campaign to produce and create cards to be placed inside those cookie bags for the military members, and so we collected well over 1,000 cards to be sent to the members and the cookies that they received. So those are just some of the activities or things that's been going on.
Some highlights continued, and I really just tried to grab a sampling from around the district. There's good things going on at every school, but I just tried to grab a sampling from just around the district. Woodswood High School this year, there was 9/11 ceremony, and they honored their active-duty veteran, First Lieutenant of the Police there. It was on their football field, very special ceremony on their teachers and staff and students all attended. And Eastern Line High School held a Veterans Day ceremony, and they had a press speaker about the military maintenance colonel, Governor McDaniel, who was a former prisoner of war, then his 80s, I mean, it was just amazing, and a dynamic speaker, and they had a really great show here that they also honored veterans there. They welcomed through the Sabres with the ROTC, so it was just a very, very powerful ceremony there as well. So I just wanted to highlight a few good things that were going on around the district and to thank all the schools that have been all been doing really great job this year. Okay, so getting into one of the bulk of my presentation tonight is to talk about that NCMAC Scorecard Working Group that has provided, you all did. So Christie and I are on the North Carolina Military Affairs Committee, and we sit on the Quality of Life Committee, and we are also in the group called the Scorecard Working Group. Within that Scorecard Working Group, we decided that we are going to put together one-pagers for the military families to be able to see quick references of how their students are doing in local school districts that cloud, I think, in Wayne County. So right now, it's just going to be the big four, which you know is us, Seymour Johnson, and we have Camp Lejeune, Forest Liberty now, and Cherry Point. So us four will have these scorecards. So the data that is provided is publicized and data does come from our NC report cards, and we, because we are so military-heavy, we can submerge the data down into a military subroutine, so that's where your files are going to be.
And this one pager will be updated annually and distributed where it's needed. This one pager is going to be available not only at the Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, every month we do a newcomers briefing meeting with the members that are just arriving, so they're going to be available for parents that just arrived at Seymour Johnson, as well as any new commanders that are coming in, they'll get this one pager to give the data and information about the school, to share the good things that Wayne County did.
So this is the first page of the one pager, and I know it's a little hard to see, so if we need to refer to it in front of you. So the top just kind of describes the accurate numbers that I just received. It tells about our total student population, it tells about our 13% military connection, the highly ineffective teaching staff that we have, and the info from our NC report card, tells our number of schools, and this is the schools that are pulled out, should I say, and then our three non-traditional options that are there. We do get a narrative portion of this, so we do get to describe some of our educational opportunities with Wayne County Public Schools that may be unique to us, or maybe something we just specifically like to highlight. And Dr. Richards so kindly provided us a really powerful quote, and it just highlights his dedication as well as ours at Wayne County Public Schools to our military students and people. All right, I'll let Christie cover the top section.
So at the very top, it talks about the certification of the teachers and certifications that we have, as well as the students that are taking AP courses, we got 198, and then students in CCP courses, 773. And then it has accounts for to student ratios, as well as the student district expenditure ratios and ratios.
And the sources are provided on that for the ASCA student ratio, as well as the table of data that tells about the per pupil expenditure. The next section, the section below, I've blown it up here because I just kind of wanted to highlight that. But what this is, is it explains how our military students are performing, including data loss or testing data. And this is GLP, which is the general proficiency. So these are students that score a level 3, 4, or 5 on their testing data. And as you can see, Wayne County Public Schools' military students are doing very well, and we have correlated that data against our county, so our district, and then against state-level data as well. So and again, each of the four counties that have the scorecard are doing this, and if you're studying the table, it shows you the top quote is military kids outperformed peers, military-connected students in Wayne County Public Schools perform above district and state averages. So this is our scorecard that we have. This data is going to be provided, I'd like Christie to get up our newcomers, and we'll have it on our website. We do not have it on our website now, but we're going to show you guys. And also, once every district is complete, it will be on rncmilitary.com as well. And we want to thank the NCMAC because they provided the marketing for this data, and so a big shout-out to NCMAC, and thank them for that. All right, that's it.
And we want you to definitely remember that April the 19th is our Purple Up Day, so that's the day that you bring out all purple of all kinds, socks, shoes, pants, ties, you name it, and purple with kids. If you have an opportunity on the 19th at 9:00 a.m., we are going to do a photo, there's a community photo under the Dandelion Mule, because downtown, so you're welcome to join us on that day, as well as I do have some purple, I don't want to say, have some purple items. Because the word we can't use. Have some purple items for you that I will give, and hopefully you'll be able to utilize some of those during that time of this entire month.
All right, and the photo we take at 9:00 a.m., so we do invite you to come down morning on the 19th. Your purple one, show it for us, and we thank you for our material.
What question on the flyer?
Yes.
Who is this going to be provided to? Is this incoming military, like when they get radio station?
Okay. Because I think there's a lot of questions. Like that graph right there on the bottom on the backside is that that tells a whole story that I think needs to be told to the military. They are performing, and they can thrive inside of our schools, whereas just simply looking at other data from other sources makes them a little nervous. But this tells a story that military-connected children, which I was one of, my dad retired from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, I went through the majority of my school-age years through Wayne County Public Schools. I moved here when I went into the fifth grade, and I graduated from Wayne County Public Schools, and I did fine, and my friends all did fine. And so I think that that helps to tell that story because a lot of people are nervous based on other things that they see. So I really love that this is included inside of that flyer so that they can see that story.
And that was a lot of what was driving behind this is because we're actually seeing that at all of our military-connected districts that we've analyzed so far. So we just want parents to know that when they get here, they're going to grow up, they're going to have support, and we're going to be here for the families as well.
And I believe there's a proclamation to go along with this, is that correct? All right. Do you all have a copy of that proclamation with you?
Sylvia's getting it.
Okay, Sylvia's getting the proclamation. I tell you what I'll do, just so that we are not holding anything up. Proclamation is actually inside of Board Docs, and I will read the proclamation from Board Docs. Wayne County Board of Education Proclamation, Month of the Military Child, Whereas Thousands of Brave Americans Have Demonstrated Their Courage and Commitment to Freedom by Serving in Our Country's Armed Forces in Active Duty Posts Around the World, And Whereas Nearly 2 Million Children Have At Least One Parent Currently Serving Active Duty, And Whereas Wayne County Public Schools Has Over 2,000 Military-Connected Students, Over 13% of Its Student Population Who Are Children of Active Duty Reserve Retired Veterans, And Whereas Wayne County Public Schools Has Partnered with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and the Military Child Education Coalition Since 2004, And Has Committed to Being an Active Participant in the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunities for Military Children in Order to Help Military Children Transition from School Systems Around the World, And Whereas Wayne County Public Schools Works to Help Both Students and Staff Effectively Deal with Military Issues Such as Deployments, Homecomings, and Moving Transitions Through the Use of District Military Liaison, And Whereas Wayne County Public Schools Works to Maintain Strong Communication Between the District and Seymour Johnson Air Force Base by Working Collaboratively with the Base Leadership and School Liaison, And Whereas the United States Department of Defense Celebrates the Month of April as Month of the Military Child, Further Highlighting the Important Role of Military Children Play in the Armed Forces Community, And Whereas the Children of Our Service Members Are Major contributors to the Strength of Their Parents and Making Significant Contributions to Family, School, our Community, the State, and the Nation Despite Repeated and Prolonged Absences of One or Both Parents, And Whereas Parents Serve in the Military, Their Children Serve Too, And It Is Fitting for Our District to Pay Tribute to Military Children for the Commitment, Their Struggles, and Their Unconditional Support of Our Troops. Now therefore, we, the Wayne County Board of Education, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as the Month of the Military Child, and April 19th as Purple Up Day for Wayne County Public Schools. We encourage all schools, personnel, and Wayne County residents to recognize the contribution of our military families, and to celebrate the spirit of military children across our district and nation by wearing purple on April 19th as an outward symbol of appreciation for our youngest heroes. Dated this 8th day of April 2024, signed by myself, Craig Foote, Chair of the Board of Education, and Dr. Richards, Secretary of the Board of Education. I have a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Motion for second. All those in favor? All right. Thank you so much for everything you do and for the service that you provide to our military.
Christie, if you don't mind, and if the board would not mind, if she would come around so we could shake her hand.
Absolutely.
I do. It seems like everywhere I go and other places, I see Christie out and about. I'm not quite sure how she has all the time to commit to the different places that she gets around to, but she makes it happen. Great job. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're doing double duty here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. And thank you.
Oh, our bands.
We're getting it put on right now. Purple up.
I'm going to save mine for April 19th, so I won't lose it.
Next item on our agenda is 4B. Item 4B is the School Library Media Month Proclamation, and if we could also get our school library media coordinators and staff to come forward. I know we've got some in here. There we go. I recognize a couple of you.
Did we have the name of that week?
Yes, yeah, that'd be great. We'll read this one also from the computer. All right, so Wayne County Board of Education Proclamation for School Library Media Month, Whereas Wayne County Public Schools Strives to Offer Comprehensive School Library Media Programs Through 27 School Media Coordinators and 5 Instructional Technology Facilitator Positions Across the District, And Whereas the School Library Media Program is to ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas and information, And Whereas the school media coordinators and technology facilitators' role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the library program is an integral part of the instructional program of the school, And Whereas the Board of Education has entrusted the media coordinator and technology facilitator in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, and to guide and encourage content in recreational reading, as well as digital learning for every student. And Whereas lifelong learning begins as a systematically developed through the Information and Technology Skills Curriculum taught in elementary, middle, and high school, And Whereas the library media program contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education, And Whereas school media coordinators and technology facilitators in Wayne County Public Schools have dedicated themselves to work for quality library media technology programs for all students, Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of Wayne County Public Schools does hereby proclaim April 2024 as School Library Media Month in all public schools of Wayne County, and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Wayne County to recognize and support this action, and to participate throughout the month of April in celebration of the 39th anniversary of School Library Media Month, dated this 8th day of April 2024, signed by myself, Craig Foote, Chair of the Board, and Dr. Mark Richards, Secretary to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you don't mind, if we could, give a round of applause.
Yes. Here we have a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. West, seconded by Mr. Henderson. All those in favor? All right.
Mr. Foote, I would like to add one other thing.
Yes.
There's something else needs to be added to that proclamation. A lot of media coordinators serve as testing coordinators also in the schools, so they do multiple roles, not just in media centers.
Any other comments?
If they would, please come around so we can shake their hand and congratulate them for the work, and a copy of this resolution will go out to each of our schools. Thank you.
Yeah, I thought so. Thanks so much. I did, it's very nice.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I don't know where they're going. All right, so we've got those two proclamations, and then we've got some proclamations for now. All right, next agenda item is 4C, Memorandum of Understanding with Wayne Community College, and I believe that is Dr. Mason. And we do have a representative with us tonight, Dr. Jenkins from Wayne Community College.
We do have Dr. Jenkins from Wayne Community College with us tonight. Dr. Jenkins has been very instrumental and very kind while we complete this MOU so that we can have a strong partnership between Wayne Community College and the Wayne County Public Education. This MOU will establish us as partnerships so that we can continue our support with educator programs, and also have student teacher, clinical teacher interns here, clinical teacher mentors, and support here with supporting teachers into Wayne County Public Schools. We're very excited about this opportunity tonight, and we bring you this MOU for your approval. This will begin immediately, as soon as you approve this tonight, we do have opportunities to establish this for expectations to support those residencies here in Wayne County. This has been a board review by our board attorney, and so I recommend this MOU for your approval tonight.
Is there anyone who has any questions for Dr. Mason regarding the MOU? All right, if there are none, we have a motion to approve the MOU of Wayne Community College.
So moved.
We got a motion by Ms. Burden.
Second.
Mr. West, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much, Dr. Mason.
Dr. Mason and Mr. Chairman, if I could, just again, just piggyback on the comments of Dr. Mason regarding the relationship with Wayne Community College. I would like to say I'm greatly appreciative of Dr. Jenkins for being here with us this evening. The relationship with Wayne Community College, I believe, is probably stronger than ever, and their willingness to work with Wayne County Public Schools, and I hope the same would be said about Wayne County Public Schools working with the community college. It's just a great asset for our community, and the benefit it provides to our students and greater community is just unparalleled, and so I just am appreciative of that opportunity. and greater community is just unparalleled. And so I just am appreciative of that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mason, I think you got the next item, 4D on the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Partnership program as well. So this time as we will come forward with Brown as well as Dr. Elizabeth Stanford, who is coming with a presentation and some comments about our partnership, which is a dual partnership. We're excited that we have been working on this opportunity. Dr. Elizabeth talked about just partnering to give other opportunities for apprenticeship programs for our incoming teachers and also residency teachers in Wayne County. So we have established and written this apprenticeship application. And we are happy that these partnerships will afford us the pathway to a college education funding and also a return here to teach in Wayne County Public Schools. So I would like to allow, if anyone first would like to share an update for that.
Good evening, Board. It is really great to see you and to be here in Wayne County. I represent the National Educator Registered Apprenticeship Intermediary funded by the United States Department of Labor. The Research Triangle Institute International out of the Research Triangle Park here in North Carolina was funded by the USDA to work across the United States to help school districts set up and implement registered apprenticeship programs in education. And there are five occupations that we work in. Here in Wayne County, I would like to congratulate you and commend your partnership with the community college on registering the only K-12 teacher apprenticeship currently in the state of North Carolina. The Educator Registered Apprenticeship Intermediary is working across the US. We have been registering programs and working with multiple partners all the way to Alaska and Hawaii, Guam, and Puerto Rico. And you were the second registered apprenticeship program that we wrote for teacher K-12. But you are the first that we are funding. And so that is something that we are super excited about. And so I come here today with a check from the Educator Registered Apprenticeship Intermediary. And I wanted to show you for $25,000. And this is all thanks to your local partners. Kristy Salz from Wayne Community College, who partnered with the team here that included Dr. Mason, Ms. Felicia Brown. And they worked very closely together with Dr. Richard's complete support to create a way for people who have a heart for students and for Wayne County Public Schools to become teachers. So this is very exciting. And I wanted to show you just a little bit about what the Educator Apprenticeship Intermediary is doing for your county. We are supporting the 4-on-1 coaching, which we did through writing your apprenticeship program and working with the community college to get it registered with Apprenticeship NC. We're also going to stay with your county through the implementation process and work on you, work with you, and work with your staff on implementing the program, on making sure that your apprentices have all of the tools that they need in the program to be successful. And we're going to continue that coaching process for as long as you'll have us here. So thank you for partnering with us. This means everything to us. We are so excited to present this check to you tonight. And I'm going to hand it over to Wayne Community College that has a certificate.
I would like to publicly note, as she kind of mentioned, Ms. Kristy Salz has been working diligently on the ground with Dr. Mason and Ms. Brown to get this carried out. Ms. Salz is actually in Louisville, Kentucky tonight with our president, Dr. Patty Piper, as we are hopefully going to bring home a battle of the award. So we're very much looking forward to that. But in recognition of this, I'll simply read the certificate. The certificate recognizes and confirms that Wayne County Public Schools is an approved registered apprenticeship program in the occupation of K-12 teacher under the sponsorship of apprenticeship Wayne, Wayne Community College. On this date of the 11/16/2023, under the approved authority of the United States Department of Labor through the Office of Apprenticeship. Get you guys, we'll just be up front and you guys right back behind me. Come on up here. Everybody, this was a team effort. This has been going on for a long time. To say it's been going on for a long time, I met Dr. Stainferdin years ago, and she was the youth apprenticeship coordinator. And so I have been very passionate about apprenticeships, and I know Ms. Salz in my previous role. I know I was trying to work on it, it's been an idea for a long time. Never did I think that it was going to be a big check deal. I'm proud of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
And look, I know how hard it was because we were sitting down there looking at all the tasks and it was taking a long time. So I appreciate your deal and your work trying to get that done. I appreciate that so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you want to say it? To approve the apprenticeship program. You just need to formally approve the acceptance of the $25,000.
Alright, I think we do have action on this. We just need to accept the program and the acceptance of the incentive funding specifically, as with any donation, the board approves the donations. And we would like to go ahead and have a motion to accept the, the funds from the intermediary. Who exactly was it coming from? DOL, it was funded through DOL.
You need a motion to approve the program as presented and accept the funds.
Okay, program as presented and acceptance of the funds from ERA intermediary incentive request.
So moved.
Alright, we got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Alright. And just so that the public does know, it is seven minutes past 5:30. 5:30 is our public comment section time. We did not have anyone sign up for public comments, so that will be known tonight. So we will move on in our agenda to item 4E, the Wayne County Public Schools Teaching Fellowship Program. Dr. Mason.
Yes, sir. So tonight we also bring forward the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program. I did bring this to you prior to the board. Tonight, we're excited to share that our program has been approved as one of the 20 districts in the state of North Carolina to have the pilot program again for the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program. We're excited that we will be the recipient of a three-year, $50,000 recruitment grant to begin in 2024 to recruit and promote teaching fellows in Wayne County Public Schools. So we will begin activating this upon approval tonight. We do have a MOU there with the agreement that is limited to board docs for your approval. The contact person, Dr. Bennett Jones, he was supposed to be here tonight with a big check. And maybe he will be here another time. But we are excited that we bring this MOU to you as well so that we can continue to have another grow your own program in Wayne County Public Schools. So I recommend this MOU for your approval.
Alright, thank you so much.
And this MOU should be subject to legal or further legal review, depending legal review.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the MOU pending legal review.
So moved.
Alright, motion. You got a second, Mr. West?
Immediate motion.
Mr. Joyner? Any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Mason.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, these are just two great opportunities, and I'm so appreciative of Dr. Mason's work on this as well to further try to deepen our pool of qualified teachers in Wayne County. Great opportunity.
Dr. Richard, I think it's very appropriate that at our joint meeting with the county commissioners, one of the commissioners stressed that we needed to begin to participate and do grants on our own. We realize that we've already been doing that, and this is just an addition to that pool. So I hope they will read Mr. Ken Dirksen's boardroom. And let them know that we, we do apply for grants, and we not only apply for grants, but we start programs that promote us getting grants to help us work with our students and staff.
And have been doing that.
That's right. Well said. Thank you, Ms. Burden. Alright, next item on our agenda is 4F Autism Acceptance Month Proclamation. Dr. Richard, you're going to handle that. Is there any EC department staff here with us this evening that can come forward for the proclamation? There we are, alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, it is my privilege to read a proclamation on behalf of the board. Whereas autism is a lifelong neurological disorder with CDC statistics indicating a rate of one in 36 children being diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder in the United States in 2023. And whereas autism affects each individual in different ways and can range from level one to level three for support, knows no racial, ethnic, or social boundaries, and affects young and old alike. And whereas our understanding of autism has grown since it was first diagnosed in 1980 as a separate diagnosis, and there is no known cure or medical detection for autism. And whereas accurate early diagnosis and the resulting appropriate education and intervention are vital to the future growth and development of each student. And whereas the success of students lies in a broad spectrum of treatments and an informed public and community committed to providing support and service to individuals diagnosed with autism speech disorders, autism spectrum disorders. And whereas Wayne County Public Schools is committed to its mission to educate all students with autism, to support their families, to celebrate differences, and is currently providing support to more than 600 autism spectrum disorder students with IEPs or 504 plans. And whereas the dedication of Wayne County Public Schools, teachers, instructional assistants, support staff, therapists, and school administrators are vital in the success of students with autism. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Education recognizes and hereby proclaims the month of April 2024 as Autism Acceptance and Awareness Month. Signed by Chairman Foke and myself as Superintendent of Wayne County Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Richard. Do we have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Alright, thank you.
As, as these individuals are going around and shaking their hands, I just want you to make me be aware that these are members of our district autism support team. These are teachers, occupational therapists.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you. I love your sweater. I recognize that on your sweater. Thank you. Hello, you. Miss you.
Okay, thank you for all that you do. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is everyone from Dixie Trail? Thank you. Okay. Where the teachers.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Alright, we are on to item 4G in the agenda, which is Occupational Therapy Month Proclamation. I believe we may have some EC staff to come forward for that one also. Some of the same staff members. Alright, I'll turn this over to Dr. Richard for reading the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proclamation reads, whereas the occupational therapy profession officially turns 107 years old in 2024, and Occupational Therapy Month was initiated in 1980. And whereas occupational therapists, certified occupational therapy assistants, and occupational therapy clinicians, educators, and students nationwide, along with the American Occupational Therapy Association, AOTS, have declared April 2024 as Occupational Therapy Month with a special theme of occupational therapy, advancing health, well-being, and quality of life. And whereas the profession of occupational therapy makes valuable contributions in helping students to do the everyday tasks they need and/or want to do to be successful in the school environment and in their community. And whereas the services of occupational therapy are available in Wayne County Public Schools through three occupational therapists and three certified OT assistants and five contract occupational therapists and four contract certified OT assistants providing direct and or indirect therapy to 459 students and currently assessing 337 referrals so far this school year. And whereas the success and productivity of Wayne County Public Schools students depend upon the effective use of the important services of occupational therapists and certified occupational therapy assistants. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Education recognizes and hereby proclaims the month of April 2024 as Occupational Therapy Month and calls upon all Wayne County Public School stakeholders to recognize the achievements and contributions of these valued professionals. Signed by Chairman Foke and myself as Superintendent of Wayne County Public Schools.
Alright, we got, proclamation's been read. Do we have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Alright, and a second? All those in favor? Alright, do we have, it looks like we have somebody getting ready to say something here. If you want to go ahead and you guys go ahead and provide us some information.
Hi, Ms. Kim. My name's Carmen Forrest. I'm the OT department in county. The OT department has been really busy here. The handout, to just summarize some of the wonderful things that we've been doing. We've been striving to enable students of all abilities and needs to access their education. We provide direct services to remediate challenges and build needed skills. We also do a lot of consultation with parents and staff regarding modifications, accommodations, sensory needs, behavioral needs, accessibility needs, classroom setup, et cetera. As you may know, the need for specialized and individualized instruction is on the rise. We're seeing many more referrals, especially for preschool-aged children. We have also seen an increase in intensive student needs in all of our schools. With the overriding principle of least restrictive environment, we're seeing these in all settings, from our separate school, to the separate classrooms, to the general education classrooms. OTs are doing what we do best in the natural environment of the student. And I've given you, on your handout, a little chart that shows you kind of the last three years and our numbers, how that's looking for referrals and for, for direct services and indirect services. I've also given you the numbers of locations that we're serving. The number of preschool locations all around the county has dramatically increased as well. We're in like 33 preschools now. So we're driving all over and seeing a lot of kids. Finally, I've listed the names of our staff. Some are occupational therapists, some are occupational therapy assistants, some are state employees, some are contractors, some work full-time and some work part-time. But no matter our title or how we are paid, we're very happy to serve the families, the students, and the staff in Wayne County. Thank you for letting us serve.
Thank you so much for all that you do for our students and... A lot of innovation, I'm sure, has to go into that, and I thank you so much for serving those students. You all. (Applause).
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol. (Laughter). Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol.
(Laughter). Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol. (Laughter). Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol. (Laughter). Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol. (Laughter). Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan.
Some of these are services.
Thank you. Uh-huh. Thank you.
Yeah, some of it's listed and some of it's not. (Laughter). So maybe up there on the P V cost.
Yeah, no doubt. What are we doing here? We are, at this time right now, unless another board member has, or any board members have any issues with it, we're going to skip around a little bit of the agenda, just simply because we have some guests that are with us this evening that we'd like to recognize as board spotlights. So we are going to come back to some of the more just routine business items that we've got with facility reports and approvals of some of the items coming out of those, and we are going to recognize some individuals for board spotlight this evening, and the first person that we'd like to recognize is going to be Jason Kennedy from Rosewood High School. Yeah, family come up too, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, either one here. Baseboard?
I'm just going to read just this information in the certificate presentation, but Jason competes on Rosewood High Wrestling Team in the one hundred and twenty-six pound weight division. On February the seventeenth, he won the one A individual wrestling crown in his division at North Carolina High School Athletic Association Class One A Individual Wrestling Championships held at the Greensboro Coliseum. Jason spent months preparing for the event, much training both home and off the map. It's worth noting that he has a four and twelve career record, has ninety-three wins, is a three-time Eastern Regional Champion, and was previously a state runner-up. On behalf of the board, we congratulate you for your successfully becoming a state champion in your wrestling event. You are an outstanding student athlete and a role model for students across this state. Congratulations. (Applause). I have a certificate here for you to present. Now, Mr. President, what does the certificate say? It's a certificate of recognition that the Wayne County Public Schools Board of Education recognizes Jason Kennedy for becoming the twenty twenty-four Individual North Carolina High School Athletic Association Class One A Wrestling Champion in the one hundred and twenty-six pound weight division. Congratulations. (Applause). And, Dr. Jackson, do you want to get, did you get a picture? Okay, very good. Present that certificate. If you want to go around, I'm sure the board would like to shake your hand. Mr. Schwartz, didn't you used to wrestle?
Looks like he got a hold of Schwartz.
Yeah. Look, he got a hold of Schwartz. Yeah.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
What was your record again? What was it?
Uh, this year it's like fifty.
I mean, what, what'd he say, like ninety-four?
He doesn't know. Last year, I saw. Are you the coach of the day?
I'm Danny, Coach. Assistant Coach.
All right.
I know, you were training him all the way.
(Laughter).
All right. Wonderful. Mr. Foote, at one hundred and twenty-six pounds, I'm just shy of that guy.
(Laughter). Well, you know, the camera does add weight to it.
All right, I think we have another board spotlight, Ms. Andrea Frelay and her family that's with her. Come forward.
Mr. Chairman, Wayne County Public Schools was recently awarded a Blue Ribbon Award for Effective Communication from North Carolina State Public Relations Association for its Let's Go to School Early Education Seminar held last spring. The Let's Go to School is a federal programs initiative-led family event designed to help parents prepare their child for kindergarten. Ms. Frelay, a member of the North Carolina School Public Relations Association, helped coordinate the event with collaborative support from the Federal Programs Department, the Curriculum and Instruction Department, and the Community Engagement and Student and Family Support Department. The seminar was held at the H. B. Brown Center in Goldsboro, drawing one hundred parents and forty-three children. During the seminar, families participated in interactive sessions, each thoughtfully aimed to align with theme. The sessions encompassed topics such as emotional management, literacy tips, and cognitive skill development. It is worth noting that the seminar's theme was inspired by Mo Willems' children's book, The Pigeon Has to Go to School, where the author himself, again, of the school district, is the reason to use the book's theme for the Let's Go to School event. Following the event, Ms. Frelay shared that the event offered a welcoming atmosphere for parents and guardians and was designed to foster a strong sense of belonging as their children transition between home and school. On behalf of the board, we congratulate Ms. Frelay for helping the district receive this special prestigious award and for her efforts along with those of the collaborating departments to make this award-winning kindergarten venue this event a true success. (Applause). I have a certificate here for on behalf of the board. Several certificates, and I will briefly read each one of these. The first is to Ms. Frelay, on behalf of Wayne County Public Schools, Wayne County Board of Education. The board recognizes Andrea Frelay for her role in coordinating the Let's Go to School Early Education Seminar, which earned a Blue Ribbon Gold Award for the North Carolina School Public Relations Association. Congratulations. The next certificate is given on behalf of the Board of Education for Wayne County Public Schools and recognizes the Department of Federal Programs for being named a Blue Ribbon Award winner and Gold Award recipient for Effective Communications and Public Relations from the North Carolina School of Public Relations Association. And I present that. And the final certificate this evening is for Wayne, on behalf of the Wayne County Public Schools Board of Education, recognizes the Department of Community Engagement and Student and Family Support for being named a Blue Ribbon Award winner and Gold Award recipient for Effective Communications and Public Relations from the North Carolina School Public Relations Association. Congratulations. (Applause). You all go around. For a second.
Congratulations. Congratulations. How's it going? Good to see you. Good to see you.
This handsome young man here.
How are you?
Good.
I'm going to send you the picture. I got one.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I have some. I know, right? Exactly.
Congratulations.
They did all the work. They did all the work. They did all the work. You get the certificate. That's all. (Laughter).
Before we leave the spotlights, I do want to recognize Ms. Frelay, and I want to tell the rest of the board how lucky we are to have somebody of her caliber here on staff, because not only has she done this, but through her consulting work, she's actually even been to other countries, doing some consulting and with leadership and our community, and that benefits everybody. That benefits us, benefits public schools, benefits the community and whole. Ms. Frelay, I thank you so much for your service at Wayne County Public Schools.
Will say it.
All right, we are going to go back up in our agenda to the Facilities Committee Report. All right, Facilities Committee Chair, Mr. West. You're going to, okay? Dr. Harold's going to give the report.
I think there's some different things going on, so we're going to let him take care of it.
Okay.
And Ms. Chair, last year, Dr. Richard and members of the board, this is our annual Facilities Committee Report. So Facilities Committee met on March twenty twenty twenty-four and discussed and/or approved the following items for the April eighth board meeting tonight. The committee received information on the district phone modernization plan. The committee motioned to approve, approved before the invitation of this plan, so this comes to you tonight in the form of a motion for your action. The committee reviewed six purchase orders and added two courts for paving projects at Brogdon Primary and Brogdon Mill School to the purchase order list for approval. Committee motioned to approve the list, and this comes to the board for action in the form of a motion. I will add, I did make a mistake when you look at your purchase orders, there aren't eight that the committee approved. The last nine and ten is a separate item on the agenda for transportation, which is part of what you see here, so that is my mistake there, as well as the supporting documents. I neglected to load those. Those are loaded in board docs in the Facilities Committee meeting if you would like to look at those. So I apologize for that. Item three, the committee reviewed service contract renewals with Brayden for chiller preventative maintenance and icon boiler for boiler preventative maintenance. These service contracts have a cost increase for the second year of the three-year term. Per the contract, these items come back to the board for approval. The committee motioned to approve the year-two contract increases, and this comes to the board in the form of a motion for your action tonight. The committee also received information on and discussed items pertaining to the new Fremont attendance line option, access control, vehicle codes, and the Wayne County Public Schools sealed selection. These three items are on the agenda for action separately tonight as requested by the Facilities Committee. The committee also received an update on paving costs for Brogdon Primary and Brogdon Mill as requested, and these items, as I have mentioned, were addressed and being added to the purchase order list that you have sent tonight. Finally, the committee was provided with an update on the Rosewood Mills project. The committee reviewed proposed full plan options that I presented, and I'm also working and have scheduled a Rosewood working group meeting for this month. The committee was provided an update on capital fund for project list, and no action is required on this item.
All right, so from the Facilities Committee, we have a recommendation to approve the phone system modernization proposal, to support service POs, and the renewal of the chiller and boiler maintenance with Brayden. This needs new, second, because it has come from the committee as a recommendation. Is there any discussion on any of these items? If there are no discussion on any of these items, all those in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Harold, on Facilities Committee Report. We do have a couple of additional items that we wanted brought separately to the board, which is Fremont School attendance lines. I think this first one is for I.
Yes, sir. The committee heard and saw the data, as you have seen this loading to documents, that was for parents, and parents were in support of option one for the Fremont attendance line proposal, and the committee did make a motion to accept option one as the attendance lines for Fremont. I'll let Dr. Richard add anything to the special he might want to.
Thank you, Dr. Harold. As you know, we went and presented in the community, invited members of the community and parents, students, residents of the northern attendance area, to show them the information provided by Cropper and Associates for the two different various options. Option one presented basically the option that we refer to as the east-west version. Option two was primarily what we refer to as the north-south version. It went a little more southerly into the district. The response that we, or the opportunity for community feedback that we provided on the website was well advertised for parents and individuals in the community. They took advantage of those opportunities, and I'd like to say that the committee listened and overwhelmingly heard that the support was for option one. And so with that, I can support option one as far as what the needs are for populating the new Fremont school with students from taking off overcrowding in northwest and northeast. And so with that, the committee resoundingly supported, I believe it was unanimous, was it not, Mr. Chairman?
It was, Dr. Richard.
And so with that, I present that to you for your consideration this evening.
All right, so it's never easy when you're drawing new lines for schools, and kids sometimes end up by changing schools, so I think that this was appropriate, that the committee brought this to the full board for a motion. Do I have a motion to approve option one as the Fremont school attendance lines?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we approve option one.
Okay, Mr. West made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Sanders. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr., Dr. Richard, could you tell us why option one seemed to be what the parents wanted? Any reasons? Specific reason?
It seems to provide the least amount of disruption in terms of the attendance lines being drawn. I believe that that particular option, in terms of the differences in populating the two campuses, there's not a significant amount of difference. There are, I will acknowledge, in the information from Cropper and Associates, a good amount of unknowns in terms of future development in that particular part of the county. The northwest attendance area in particular has the greatest amount of population currently, which, as you look at vacant or arable land, as it's sometimes referred to, would seem to suggest that northeast has the greatest opportunity for growth. It's based on a hypothetical unknown. There's not been housing starts, new housing developments overwhelmingly in the northeast area. So with that, the known commodity today is, is that the parents are recognizing this in terms of the least amount of disruption being option one. And so, given the fact that option two is predicated off of the fact of future development, that is an unknown. And so with that, that's why I can support option one as well.
Well, is any of... How far does it go? Does it stop with northwest students?
It takes in northeast and northwest.
I know that, but I'm, right now, I'm going south.
Yes, ma'am.
So it stops with northwest. We would not have any kids coming out of any other school other than northwest, maybe Rosewood, and then northeast.
No, ma'am, it does not. These particular options, option one and option two, exclusively impact three students, Fremont, northeast, and northwest. The difference between the two is, is I refer to them as the east-west and the north-south. Option two goes further south, but still encompasses those same sets of students.
So it doesn't pick up any other schools than those three?
No, ma'am, it doesn't.
Okay, all right.
I have some questions relative to the criteria that was, that was used and some of the criteria that we have worked on in the past. I know one of the things that we had talked about in reassignment in the past has been the overpopulation, and I think we're trying to address that through north, the issues with northeast and northwest, but I still have a concern with option one.
the two campuses, there's not a significant amount of difference. There are, I will acknowledge, in the information from Cropper and Associates, a good amount of unknowns in terms of future development in that particular part of the county. The northwest attendance area in particular has the greatest amount of population currently, which as you look at vacant or arable land, as it's sometimes referred to, would seem to suggest that northeast has the greatest opportunity for growth. It's based on a hypothetical unknown. There's not been housing starts, new housing developments overwhelmingly in the northeast area. So with that, the known commodity today is, is that the parents are recognizing this in terms of the least amount of disruption being option one. And so given the fact that option two is predicated off of the fact of future development, that isn't unknown. And so with that, that's why I can support option one as well.
Well, is any of... How far does it go? Does it stop with northwest students?
It takes in northeast and northwest.
I know that, but I'm, right now I'm going south.
Yes, ma'am.
So it stops with northwest. We would not have any kids coming out of any other school other than northwest, maybe Rosewood, and then northeast.
No, ma'am, it does not. These particular options, option one and option two, exclusively impact three students.
Fremont.
Northeast and northwest. The difference between the two is, is I've referred to them as the east-west and the north-south. Option two goes further south, but still encompasses those same sets of students.
So it doesn't pick up any other schools than those three?
No, ma'am, it doesn't.
Okay, all right.
I have some questions relative to the criteria that was, that was used and some of the criteria that we have worked on in the past. I know one of the things that we had talked about in reassignment in the past has been the overpopulation, and I think we're trying to address that through north, the issues with northeast and northwest. But I still have a concern with option one, with us only having an enrollment of 548, although we built in the school for 750 students.
The one comment, Mr. Chairman, if I may, responding to that is, the housing starts that we know today, or in Fremont, are providing for future expansion. While, whereas the school next year, if option one is approved, will start them off at a lower capacity. The known that we have is, the Fremont area is primed for significant growth. So this plan could in fact provide for the greatest amount of growth in the area and alleviate overcrowding with the, as we say, the mobile units or cottages that are put up, trailers, whatever you moniker you want to attach to it, will perhaps lead us to the greatest distance or amount of time in not having to put moving units at Fremont School.
Well, have we done any comparisons as, as far as the amount of time it would take a child coming from the farthest area of the county going, of that line going to that school?
Yes, sir.
And how does that differ in option two?
Yes, sir. In terms of the statistical amount of information that Mr. Cropper provided in his analysis, there is not a significant difference in either of the plans in terms of transportation differences between them.
When we opened Spring Creek Middle and Grantham Middle, we put a freeze the first year on transfers into that school for students other than the students that were supposed to go. Are we considering doing that for Fremont stars?
Now, I'm not familiar with that particular aspect, but I can certainly check into that.
In, I went to the public comments or the public presentation that you did, and I think there were a couple of people, because this still do, this still does affect people, regardless of whether or not it was 80%. It was 80% of the parents that responded, and 80% of people who responded were parents, that they wanted this particular option. But there were still some that did not like this, and I believe you mentioned that they would have the opportunity to potentially stay at northeast or northwest, but they would have to provide their own transportation. Is that going to be the case?
That is correct.
That is going to be the case.
Because they will be out of district.
They will be out of district. The same process that anybody wants to go out of district, they'll get to go through that process, but they will have that opportunity because the three schools themselves will not be fully populated out.
That's correct. Ms. Burton, perhaps was that?
No, that's not my question. My question is separate from that. When we open Grantham and Spring Creek, we put just a one-year freeze because on transfers in from students that do not live in those districts. Because if you don't do that, then you can have students transfer in, and by the time you get to the second year or when houses are developed, homes are developed out there, then you're looking at yourself being overcrowded.
Sure.
And it opened up the second year. It just gave the school an opportunity to run with the students that were assigned there.
We can certainly take a look at that. I'd be interested.
This is a little different than that, simply because we're moving some district lines here. So we didn't at Spring Creek and Grantham. But I mean, I see what your point is, but you know, we'll have to look at the numbers that once the district lines are established and voted on.
Yeah, I definitely would like to echo something that Dr. Richard said about knowns. So I do sit on the Wayne County Planning Board, and I do know that there are subdivisions that are being planned out in that area. And now, I don't know if it was because they knew that they were building a new Fremont school and developers said, hey, it's good to build, you know, subdivisions around new schools because people like new schools, or if it's the simple fact that it's really easy to jump on 795 right up there Fremont and you can scoot pretty quickly over to Raleigh area. So I will say that the knowns on the aspect from the planning board is that we do know that there are permissible lots that are going up and there's more getting ready to come in the pipeline. So I did want to echo your, your comments about that.
Are they more in the Fremont area or are they more in the northeast, northwest?
They're more, they're more off of the Fremont exit specifically. I've seen some that have gone actually fair, surprisingly to me, farther north than what we have been seeing, but even all the way up to, is it 222 that goes across in there?
222.
That there were some off of 222 going back over towards the Nahana area that was a fairly large, that was a fairly large subdivision.
And there's two on Fields Road as well. There's one already being developed with houses in it and one fixing to be.
Okay. All right, is there other discussion on this item?
I would, this is not necessarily for this item, but I think it's something that the Board really needs to take in consideration. As I look at, at the data that has been presented to us today, all across this county, there are overcrowded schools. You look at Grantham, you look at Spring Creek area, I think we as a Board would do a better job if we were to do a comprehensive reassignment, which could impact this. But I think until that is done, option one would be the better option because it would less impact. But I do hope that this Board will really seriously contemplate the issue of looking at a comprehensive reassignment for the entire county because it's needed.
Any other comments? All right, no other comments? All of those in favor of approving option one, raise your hand. All right. Next item, Dr. Harold, access control proposal?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The next item is item J. This as well also with the Facilities Committee was failing to be brought to the Board. It was a separate item. So we did put out four bids back in January 23rd, posted the business list, and then we opened it in February. We received those bids for access control in 15 of our schools. This is our elementary and middle schools. This is utilizing the funds that the Board approved in this fiscal year for safety and security. Those bids were from Convergent Technology in the amount of $1,438,939.97, and Securitas Technologies in the amount of $1,853,340. This is for access control. So we're talking about your key card badge access points in and out of our buildings at our elementary and middle schools. There are 15 of those sites that are listed for you in the proposal that was put out if you have questions about those. So this comes to you seeking your approval tonight out of the Facilities Committee and also for any discussion you may want to have.
All right, so Facilities Committee has put this one on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the?
Mr. Chair, may I, may I suggest we defer action on this for a few minutes and come back to it later on?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion, for clarity.
Yes.
Because this was a motion that came, actually came out of the Facilities Committee, does it require a new motion?
It does. I don't believe that they came with a recommendation.
It is, and I would notice it says, the committee motioned to accept a proposal from Convergent Technologies for access control measures. Does it require another motion?
I think the reason for that was is that Finance Committee did not have a quorum, so it was moved back to the Facilities Committee for approval.
What's in the report is that the committee also received information on and discussed items pertaining to the access control bid proposals. These three items are on the agenda for action separately. So there's not a recommendation from the committee that's listed on the report. I wasn't at the committee meeting, so don't know if there was anything else.
Committee motion to bring it here tonight for potential approval and discussion.
With a recommendation from the committee or not?
Recommendation.
Because it doesn't say that in the report.
Yeah.
It was a recommendation from the committee, so.
So we're going to defer on this one for a few minutes. We are going to move over, Mr. Schwartz is going to take a look at that for us. We're going to move to item 4K on the agenda, which is the transportation school bus purchase.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. So this is transportation school bus purchases. We've been on the Finance Committee agenda, but of course we didn't have a Finance Committee meeting. So these are pass-through funds that we have to expend on school buses that come to us from the state in PRC 120, and we're looking at purchasing two new buses from Thomas LLC in the amount of $140,212, and then one from White International in the amount of $149,334.47. Again, this is state pass-through money that comes to you tonight requesting your approval.
All right. We got, or we've requested a motion to approve the purchase of two school buses using PRC 120, which is state pass-through funds. Do we have a motion to accept this proposal?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to know what's the difference between the motion B, because it's almost a $10,000 motion.
So there's not that much difference between Thomas and the White other than might be models of car, but the availability of the buses, this is what the state has, so we're purchasing what the state has available at the time.
All right, thank you for the clarity.
Was that Mr. Joyner's motion? Thanks.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. Is there any other discussion? No other discussion? Do we have a call for a vote? All those in favor? All right, approved, unanimous. Next, we're on to item L, the Wayne County Public Schools seal selection. And I do believe that this did go to the Facilities Committee. There was a lot of discussion, and there was some request for some modifications. So I don't know that they've even seen totally the modified, modified seal, but we are presenting that tonight. Would you like to discuss that, Dr. Harold?
Yes, sir, Mr. Harold. Let's have a little bit in terms of, there were three examples of seals shared with the Facilities Committee, and this was the one that the Facilities Committee, I think, liked the most out of the, that we have, so.
The change that was made was in the coloration of the Inspiring Excellence banner. Actually, I think makes the lettering stand out more. It really provides a nice pop. And then, of course, it keeps the same color scheme, and of course, the torch of knowledge, and of course, textbook in Wayne County Public Schools, and of course, identification of the city and state for the school system. This was done by the vendor in taking into consideration the changes endorsed by the committee, and so I do present this to you for your consideration this evening. Should the Board adopt this as the seal, the vendor is prepared to put it into production and have it to us within 10 days for installation.
And where we're going to place it?
It will be placed immediately behind the board on a four-foot by four-foot plexiglass stood off from the wall in metal pins in colorized format.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion to accept the design for the Wayne County Public Schools seal.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Joyner. All those in, or any discussion? All those in favor? All right. All right, next, we are on to item 4L, and we are going to...
4M.
M, sorry, 4M. And we are going to need a motion to amend the agenda because the Finance Committee did not meet because they did not have quorum. So we have two items that are inside there. Those two items would be the Wayne County Public Schools Budget Amendment Number One and then the Donations Report. So do I have, can I get a motion to amend the agenda to make Wayne County Public Schools Budget Amendment be item M on the agenda, followed by the donations being on item N, and then N, O, and P moving down?
Mr. Chair, may I suggest it might be easier to just add to, instead of changing the Finance Committee report, leave that on there as item M, and change the Budget Amendment Number One to item 4S, as in Samuel, and the donations to 4T as in Trainwreck. And just skip to those items without objection.
Okay. Is there any objections to the recommendation from the attorney? No objections, do we get a motion to amend the agenda?
I make a motion to amend the agenda to S as in Samuel and T as in Trainwreck.
For the Budget Amendment and the donation. All right. Any, any, all right, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Ms. Rouse, would you like to give us a Finance Committee report in the fact that they didn't meet because we didn't have quorum?
Yeah, so on March 23, 23, Finance Committee, so there are two items that needed for Board approval that I was going to bring aside, but now it's moved to 4S and 4T.
Okay, so 4S, we will skip down to 4S, Wayne County Public Schools Budget Amendment Number One. If you'd like to go over that for the Board, Ms. Rouse.
Okay, this is Budget Amendment Number One for the 23, 24 school year. We adopted the budget back in December. We have had some additional funding that we have received through state and federal, also a note of appropriation for local fund balance. So if you look at Fund One, State Public School Fund, since the adoption of the budget resolution, we have received a little over $4.6 million in state funds. For local current expense funds, that $400,000 is fund balance appropriation to start off with facility utilization for our district. Next, we have federal grant funds in the amount of 1.7 in this amendment. This is additional carrier funds for new allotments that we have received since the adoption of the budget resolution. And then lastly, for Fund A, our other local current expense funds, we have received an additional $636,902.74. This is for different grants that we have received since our last budget resolution. One was the world language grant for WISDA in the amount of $500,000 over five years, help department grant for as well for grant, grants such as that. This brings us to the amended budget in the amount of $250,194,091.3. And back and go, just wanted to make sure that you're aware of, this one does have an appropriation of this year's fund balance for the start of the facility utilization.
All right, any questions for Ms. Rouse? We have a motion to approve the Budget Amendment.
So moved.
A motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion? All of those in favor? All right, thank you. And on to item T, the Donations Report, Ms. Rouse.
Since the last four meeting, we have had 10 donations that have been reported. The monetary amount of the donations is $175. The non-monetary amount is $6,635. This brings our year-to-date total for monetary value at $73,103, and a non-monetary value at $63,028.32.
All right, any questions on the donations for Ms. Rouse? All right, if they are none, do we have a motion to accept the Donations Report?
So moved.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you, Ms. Rouse. Appreciate that. We will now go back to item N on the, 4N on the agenda, which is the Curriculum Instruction Committee Report. You, Mr. Joyner?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If the committee members will find loaded in Board Docs, you have a summary that has been written pertaining to that meeting. There were six items really up for discussion. There'll be one part where we will actually have recommendations to go before the full Board for financial approvals as part of the things that did not go before the Finance Committee. So we'll be bringing those to the Board. And a second thing will be something coming from Curriculum Instruction concerning the duties of instructional assistance for the special needs students at Meadow Lane. So that'll be coming before approval. But if you will take a look at it, one of the things, the first discussion, it was great discussion over the Hanover Research Project. I do encourage the Board members to go in and look at this presentation. It is a PowerPoint presentation. It is loaded in the Curriculum Instruction Committee's report to look at the data because some of the data was highlighted, some of the data was not highlighted. I did speak to Dr. Richard a little bit about some of my concerns with the data, but I think he's, he says some of this stuff and collecting the data should be resolved, helping collect the data when we switch to the infinite campus, that the data should be able to be more easily obtained and propagated and have it to go through power schools. So hopefully that will resolve some of that issue. And I think Dr. Yancy and I've talked about, Mr. Yancy and I've talked about it a little bit also. It did talk about, a little bit about what the staff need... It did talk about, a little bit about what the staff need, feel they need to improve their work on the HMH reading program. And as I said, talking to the central office staff, they would talk to them about the difficulties that were occurring gathering the information from Power Schools, so hopefully that situation will be resolved. The next thing that was discussed was about the new science standards, matching those science standards to the, our current K-2 resources. And as always, writing textbooks are written by national publishers, not necessarily publishers for North Carolina, so the goal is always to reach the eighty percent mark of matching the curriculum there. And the next item is one I think is interesting because of cost savings. You will see that Wayne County Public Schools will be switching to IXL as its universal screener in believing achieve three thousand. And if you'll take a look at the amount of the cost of the savings there of going to IXL using this universal screener, and for those of you that the universal screener helps identify student weaknesses, their strengths, proficiency levels, and also helps target remediation instructions of what we need to help those students in areas. So it's a very, it's a very valuable tool, very valuable in our assessment for our students who are going through the, the program as far as being identified for special needs or whatever, so it gives us a lot of information there. But if you'll notice, that is a significant savings there. All right, the next item, item four, is where we're going to be moving into recommendation for purchase orders that came through Curriculum Instruction. One item will be for mannequins for our CPR programs at school, at certain high schools. So that's listed there at the cost of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and a few odd cents. A nine-one-one training simulator for our CTE program at Charles J. Acock. There's coming recommendations coming out for ADA playground equipment to be used at Meadow Lane. The next thing is a table that's used for the study of the human anatomy and it is supposedly to be portable, that it can be moved from different schools to different schools, but it's going to be at East Duane High School. And there was some discussion on twenty-one new Promethean boards at Goldsboro High School, knowing that potentially the changing of facilities, the board, the committee really wanted to stress and make sure that these Promethean boards will be going into the buildings that will be housing the Goldsboro High School students. It will be going to Goldsboro High School students for those twenty-one new Promethean boards. So that does come out of the committee in the form of a motion for board approval. I don't know if we're going to do that now or maybe continue on.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that now.
Okay.
We have a recommendation from the committee to approve these, these purchase orders from Curriculum Instruction Committee. Comes as a recommendation, needs no second. All those in favor? All right. Next item?
Thank you, sir. The next item, item number five in the report, talks about two new job descriptions that would basically be going before the full board here, actually for teachers and teacher assistants in the CDSP wing or the student, teachers that are involved in those, the students with the greatest needs, we'd be changing their child, their job description and also making a salary adjustment for those stu, those teachers. It did go through the board, the committee, it comes to the board for full approval, please. And I believe those are attached, those actual job descriptions are attached into the, into the board documents or committee documents.
All right, so the new job descriptions have come from the CNI Committee for the CDSP teachers and the, and ISAs for Meadow Lane with salary adjustments as a recommendation, needs no second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, what's requiring the need for a new teacher and a new teacher assistant?
It's not necessarily requiring a new teacher or a new teacher assistant. It's that teachers and teacher assistants that are dealing with some of our most needy students, they have additional responsibilities that some of the other IAs and other teachers are not expected to do. So there will be some additional training to that and then that, with that, these additional responsibilities, there will become some additional compensation.
So actually, we have the teacher and the teacher A, we're just modifying their job descriptions.
And salary.
Yes, and inside, it increases the salary, but it also puts minimum requirements of their training that they must have to work with these students. The way I look at it is, it's kind of like, and I'm just going to go a much general example, you want to have a certain number of your staff with the CPI training for handling student behavior sometimes. This is said, you want your people in the classroom, in the trenches, to be properly trained and to be compensated for it. So is that a good way of saying it, Dr., Ms. Henderson?
That's good.
Okay. Would you like to add something else to it? I mean, please.
Well, I would just also say, Mr. Henderson, this is our CDSP at Meadow Lane program and these teachers and instructional assistants must also ensure that they maintain childcare certifications in order for us to draw down our grants for the Development Day Center out of those six classrooms that are currently out there. So as Mr. Joyner did share, these are our students who are having a significant disability. Does that help?
What were you saying with the?
I was just saying, also, sometimes they have physical disabilities in which they have to be tormented, changed, things that are not typical in a regular classroom and these teachers and teacher assistants that work with these students with these physical needs go well and beyond what they are, we do in a typical classroom.
All right. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the new job descriptions and salary adjustments, please indicate by raising your hand. All right, thank you, and I think you got one last item.
Yes, sir. The last item that came forward was actually just a technical correction. There was a little bit of a technical correction that needed to be made on a bid process that was occurring for us to be able to get to E-rate funding. Basically, we just, with the recommendation of Mr. Yancy to make this minor technical correction for us to be able to apply and to utilize the E-rate funding from the state.
Add anything to that, Mr. Yancy?
No, as, as Mr. Joyner stated, they were corrections to the process and to the original motion.
All right. And so this comes as a recommendation from the committee, needs no second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, that concludes our Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting.
I would like to say one thing. Due to some unforeseen circumstances that happened on that day, we did have to do some modification of the schedule and I would like to thank the Central Services Committee and the Curriculum Instruction. They, they were most gracious in rearranging their schedules to allow us to have that meeting so that we could bring these items to the board in a timely manner so that we can take advantage of some of these things such as the E-rates. So thank you for the, thank you to Central Services and Dr. Witcher for that flexibility.
All right. We are on to 4O, which is the Policy Committee Report. Policy Committee Chair, Mr. Henderson?
Yes, the Policy Committee met today, but prior, prior to our meeting, I wanted to remind each and every one on the board that at last month's board meeting, we had several policies that came up for first read, that passed first read, so I would like to acknowledge these particular policies and ask for approval for it on a second read. That would be Policy 4240, child abuse and related risks, child safety. Policy 570, public records retention, release, and disposition. Policy 6220, operational school nutrition program. Policy 6227, schooling nutrition meal charges. And Policy 9125, dispositions by minority businesses.
Was that also Policy 4130 with discretion?
4130.
Discretionary mission.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So those have been brought to the board last month for first read. This is second read. The committee has recommended for approval. Is there any discussion?
Could we repeat those again?
That is Policy 4130, 4240, and 73, I think 7312 is the AR that goes along with it, right? Or is that?
We don't, we don't.
Yeah, that's right. So then you got Policy 570, Policy 6220, Policy 6227, and Policy 9125. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Indicate by raising your hand. All right. Items, and I think you guys met today and you had a recommendation on a couple of approvals for first read.
Yes.
Items P and Q on our agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Policy Committee reviewed Policy 346, their graduation requirements, and 3420, student promotion and accountability due to some legislative changes that took place, and I'm going to ask Dr. Witcher to speak to those. We are going to be bringing those two policies for immediate implementation.
All right. Dr. Witcher?
Thank you, Mr. Henderson, for your introduction on that as Policy Chairman. Both of the two policies, they are standalone and different policies, 3460 graduation requirements and Policy 3420, student promotion and accountability. They are each interrelated, however, in their connectedness in terms of graduation requirements as well as student promotion and accountability in each of the grade spans at the high school between freshman and senior year. The changes Mr. Henderson was referring to are related to the requirements passed into law in the General Assembly Session of this year, altering those requirements and offering a separate and distinct graduation requirement pathway for students to graduate early, having earned 22 credits. What the law from the state does is changes the ability of local school districts to have in excess of 22 units credit for a student to be able to graduate. And so with that said, Mr. Dirksen, was there anything else in addition to that that you wanted to add? Due to the timeliness of this and course registration, which has begun for our high school students and the requirement of the law, which, which requires that parents and students be duly informed in this academic year, it will necessitate the waiving of the first read and approval this evening.
And I just like that the current policy aligns with both state law and state Board of Education policy, which has also been updated and which has also removed local board's abilities to require anything above 22, while we also recognize that this particular policy will allow students to graduate in accordance with state law if they choose to go after a three-year accelerated pathway. We know that's not going to be a pathway for every child, but we would say is that it will allow schools to work with students and families in much different ways, especially if they choose to pursue a lighter load as far as 22, 24, 26 credit hours. We know some students are going to want to stay all four years to complete athletic opportunities, J or TC opportunities before entering the military, career readiness certificate pathways between school district and community college. We know that there will create opportunities for flexibility for maybe those students that are working full-time and going to school or working in the evenings and want to take a little bit lighter over senior year and still graduate. There will be some students that may choose, choose the option to graduate or complete the requirements in the first semester of senior year. So certainly different than what we're used to, but this is what this thing is basically put school districts across state in positions you have to do.
It is important to accentuate this point for students that may be watching at home, for parents that may be participating and watching at home, the core requirements for students in high school, English, math, science, social studies courses, those numbers of core requirements are not changed or altered in terms of the requirements. And then two, I would encourage those students that want to continue to participate in career and college promise offerings in coordination with Wayne Community College and that great relationship. You know, we don't want to, to take away from students' ability to participate in those programs for those students that enjoy athletics, enjoy participating in high school athletics all four of their years. I want to make sure that students understand that this may not be a pathway for students. I do believe it will most likely be a narrow percentage of students at the high school level that will participate in this, but nonetheless, the opportunity does exist.
May I ask a question? Why? Why are they changing?
The state has created an opportunity scholarship for those that complete the pathway within three years to receive a two-year college degree, I mean, I'm going to back it, scholarship for up to two years. And so for students that choose an accelerated pathway, they can complete that within three years. It does require a lot more work to double up on some of your courses, but essentially for those students, that creates an opportunity. But by allowing that, then they also create the pathway for students to graduate with 22 credits, which has always been the, 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 the state Board of Education required those core requirements for other students. But it would be, it's a lot of work to graduate within three years if you want to go that accelerated pathway, but if you do, then there's a scholarship waiting for you to a two-year or four-year UNT system.
And does that money come out of public school education?
Well, if a student is, is not enrolled in the system, funding would leave with the student.
Okay, but I'm talking about the funding of the scholarship. Are they giving the kids two years of scholarships out of public school money?
I don't know that that particular aspect is very clear yet. There's a lot of newness with this aspect that I don't think has been fully realized yet.
Well, I think one thing that we can agree.
And that may be quite polite in how.
One thing we can agree is that if they're not here a fourth year, they do not count towards our ADM.
They do not. That's right.
It's going to be a deduction from the amount of funding going to be yet for them.
And that's a concern around the state.
My, my own concern again would be with all of this being as new as it is, who should the, our parents look to in the district to answer any questions that relates to this political policy?
We are fully prepared as a district. We will articulate this to our students. Our guidance counselors, school counselors are very well adept at what this requirement change will be. Our high school administrators, we will make sure parents and students are fully aware and informed of what the opportunities are as well as what the concerns will be. We have a lot of students that participate, and the one I, I will continue to kind of talk a little bit about is athletic programs. If you're not enrolled.
You cannot participate.
You cannot participate. And athletics, I've said this many times, athletics saves a lot of students from involvement in other activities that they might find or fall into. And so I can't speak enough about the greatness of high school athletics as well as many other things, CCP, and I've already talked about those this evening. But I think people need to understand, I really truly believe this will be a very narrow group of students that will want to and also be able to participate in the reduced credit opportunity.
How will it impact CTE courses?
That is also a concern that I, I don't know that we're fully able to respond right now in terms of what the potential impact will be. I just do not know.
You've got a four-year plan, at least three years.
Then be mandated by the state.
I do, I do understand that. And that's what worries me because we go back and forward, back and forward, and back and forward.
Mr. Chair? I think we all have, yes.
Mr. Chair, these, these two policies were added as separate agenda items under the Policy Committee for approval and they come with the recommendation of the committee for approval without a first read.
That's correct.
For approval tonight.
All right, so do we need to have a motion to suspend the requirement of a first read for 2410, Policy 2410?
No, for Policies 3420 and 3460.
Yeah, but the second read, second read requirement is part of Policy 40, 2410.
Yes.
All right. So do I have a motion to suspend the requirement of a second read according to Policy 2410 for the approval of Policies 3460 and 3420, Items P and Q on our agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now, do I have a motion to approve Policy 3460 on first read?
You could do, you're up the.
Are there recommendations from the committee?
Yes.
So we don't need a, we don't need a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? All right, now, Policy 3420 comes as a recommendation of the committee. Is there any further discussion on 3420? There is none? All those in favor? All right, so it's item P, Q, and before we go back, we got one last item here, item R, Go Global North Carolina Teacher Endowment Letter of Intent. And I think Ken, you've got this one, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and it's actually a letter that Dr. UNC has written that he's submitting based on the words. on the board's decision this evening to Go Global North Carolina. Essentially, they have partnered with the North Carolina Legislature, they're providing an endowment to, beginning with tier-one counties, and essentially for Wayne County Public Schools that we proceed with this bill, the state legislature provides $60,000. If we provide $40,000 in fundraising matching funds, which we've already passed a commitment, we can proceed with this letter of intent. It didn't feel like it would bring us to the entire board. It does require a board share signature, which we could easily have done, Mr. Boat, but we felt like it was necessary to share with people, because there is a $2,000 commitment that will be provided annually, essentially the Go Global North Carolina award is worth $6,500. A percentage of that would be the state funds, a percentage of that will be the local funds through the fundraising, and of course, $2,000 of that would be annually through us. We feel like that's a small commitment that provides such a wonderful opportunity in locally cultural awareness building for our staff. And this program basically would present the Teacher of the Year, the award, which is something we did previously a number of years ago.
I've got to say, the Go Global organization, Go Global NC, I'm very fond of them. I've got to go on a trip that kind of opened my eyes to just the talent pipeline of those individuals that would be coming from Mexico to work here in the state of North Carolina. It was a community, there was five different counties, and it was a community involvement. There was teams put together. Kevin Smith from Wayne County Public Schools was one of those members. So I really do think that they provide a lot of value, and I'm excited about this opportunity. That being said, do we have a motion to accept or to approve this letter of intent to engage with Go Global NC for this opportunity?
So move, Mr. Chair.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Mr. West, I'd like to thank Bill Bryan from Mount Olive Fickle, he's the chairman, who is basically spearheading the fundraising for this program. He was the one that reached out to us when Go Global reached out to him. And so very, very excited, and the focus of some of these trips would be STEM-focused and also around agriculture. So we're very excited about starting the first trip to be in 2025.
Awesome. That is awesome. Okay, we postponed our item 4J. We are at that point to come back to that. I think our attorney and, so trying to get a couple things straight for us. That being said, I think the only thing left beyond that is going to be our consent agenda and then statements. So let's go ahead and move on to item seven, which is going to be the approval of the consent agenda.
A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and our items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed at committee meetings, open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member will accept consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the closed session minutes remaining closed?
So move, Mr. Chair.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. West. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. That was item seven. Do we have, are we, to the point where we can go back to item 4J?
We are good, we're good to go, I think.
Okay, we're going to get some clarification. We have Dr. Harold come back up and explain to us item 4J on access control proposals.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Ken. So for item J, to bring some clarity, so Facilities Committee asked for clarification on the amount of days of time it would take for the work to be done. So I answered that on the twenty, by emailing back to the committee. So convergent technologies would take thirty days to secure the equipment and then ninety days to install the equipment. Also, just to make sure, I know the Facilities Committee is aware, but to make sure the board is aware, so the 1.4 million is over the amount that the board has allocated for safety and security in this year's budget item. So the digital funds that you allocate in this next kind of budget of the 1.3 will help complete this project. This project will potentially not be completed until the 24 or 25 fiscal year, next fiscal year, this summer, but it might be paid out in the next fiscal budget. Remember, these are local funds that you've allocated out of fund allowance, which are there for us to access.
Okay, so we have got a recommendation from the Facilities Committee? Is that correct? Is this how we're-
No, sir, we'll need a motion.
We'll need a motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so would, and we are looking at going with convergent technologies?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the bid for convergent technologies to complete the access control system upgrades?
So move, Mr. Chair. And the dollar amount should be included in that motion.
All right, and for the dollar amount of, Dr. Harold, do you have that handy? I'm looking.
Yes, $1,438,939.97.
All right.
I'm sorry, say that again?
And do we need to specify in the motion that this is only for 15 schools, it's not for all the schools in the county?
You don't need to specify that in the motion. That's included in the bid documents.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. West. Mr. West, will you include that in your motion, the dollar figure of $1,438,939.97? All right, second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much. I think that concludes all of the business items and gets down to board member and superintendent comments. Start with Dr. Witcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a great evening tonight where we could recognize a large group of educators and to certainly highlight and pay great attention to autism, which is becoming unfortunately a much more prevalent concern in society, but certainly a great opportunity to highlight our teams that are working with some of our most fragile and vulnerable populations of students in our school system, and they do a great job. So again, a great opportunity to do that. Also, a wonderful opportunity this evening to pay respect and to highlight the importance of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base to our community, to highlight the significance for our military population and the sacrifices that they go through daily in terms of service to our country. I don't think we can ever say often enough how much we appreciate that service and sacrifice, and certainly thank you for being here this evening and doing such a great job of recognizing and providing service to our school system. So thank you to both of you.
All right, Mr. West.
Chairman, I don't have anything, but just I have one thing to say, and I'll just tell everybody, I had the opportunity this morning to meet very early with our superintendent at eight o'clock briefly for just a few minutes about an issue, and I'll just have to say that when I came out of his office, I know everybody's been gone for a week for Easter and what have you, but the vibrant environment when he came out and welcoming everybody, I'm just, this is kudos to the superintendent. I think a lot of people in this building and this district enjoy working for Dr. Witcher. I think he's fair. I think he stated his expectations day one when he came here, and I think people respect him for that. And I just wanted to say, it was a breath of fresh air this morning to see, I mean, everybody was almost excited about, oh, hey, welcome back. Everybody was, it was unbelievable to me. I've not seen that in this building in a long time, and I just want to say thank you. That's my comments.
Mr. West. Ms. Burton?
I just would like to recognize everyone tonight who presented programs where they have worked to develop new programs within our district and also receive grant funds to help us carry those programs out. I thank the people representing the military, working with the military and serving as our liaisons with the military for the information that they put together, and they come to us each year, and each year they do something different that allows us to know that we are doing a good job in our district with our students from the military base. So that was very, that was just, that's my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Joyner?
Yes, sir. I'd like to, first off, address a couple of things that was mentioned in the superintendent's proposed budget. I don't know if there's very many people in the community to know that this department's central services and the superintendent's leadership is working to address, like you said, that physical cliff that we're going to be coming to with the SIR funds. We're one of the few districts in the state that has worked together with the different departments to have a computer refresh program available. A lot of these people don't know what they're going to do when these computers crash, but our people have had the forethought to go ahead and go forward and get that in place. That is, that is excellent leadership. I also want to talk about the budget, whereas, you know, sometimes we get questioned about the money, how it's spent. Well, as you saw tonight, 1.3 million once again is going into the safety and security of our buildings to protect our little ones and our teachers and our staff. Once again, an excellent move by the central services and this board. So just wanted to kind of throw that out there. There's been a lot of great work done. We've talked about the classified salary scale, one of the few districts in the county, in the state that's got that in place to allow us to recruit people. Once again, you know, people know that this board has become very, we love to look at data, and we want to thank you two ladies for bringing the data to us from the military to let us look at, because we love to look at data. So thank you for that. Well, at least one of us does anyway. I guess I shouldn't speak for everybody. But lastly, I just want to give a huge, huge shout out to not only curriculum instruction, but human resources for these efforts to secure teachers, these grants, these apprenticeships, as, and I'm sorry, I can't remember which one said it, but somebody said grow your own, and we've realized that. We've had to, we have to grow our own in some situations, but, you know, we had several things mentioned tonight with grants and programs and the teaching fellows, things that through your work and your applications to be, as the lady said, the first in the state K-12. I mean, can't get much better than that, being number one. So, but, you know, I just want to give a huge amount of thank you for that because, you know, recognizing the future need, because, you know, we get up, we get beat up a lot of times about the teacher shortage, but it's not from a lack of trying on this department in central services. So thank you very much.
Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we all are very optimistic and very proud of all the things that have gone on in this district. We can see from the efforts of all the departments in the Wayne County Public Schools that they are really working hard to do what's best for the children. My hat is off to every department and along with the superintendent for the work that they are doing. Just like my buddy Bill said, there are a lot of programs that are being brought into this district by very competent and capable staff who are working extremely hard to get whatever we can for Wayne County Public Schools, and again, I want to thank them. I really want to thank them for the paving at Bryan Middle School and Bryan Primary School. I have to put my plug in, because we got some terrible parking lots down in the southern end of the county.
Yeah, you do.
But the efforts are being made to address those types of things as well. But lastly, I'm going to go back to something I said earlier, and that as a board, we really need to take time out and look at this district reassignment. I think there's some genuine needs across the county. It doesn't just affect one particular school or one feeding pattern. If you look at the data that was presented to us and these options, you will see, we got some issues that we need to address. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders.
I don't really have nothing to add to what's already been said, but we're headed in the right direction, and I appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
I'd like to make a couple comments, a couple thank yous, you know, on top of the other thank yous that you all have mentioned. One, I had learned that University of Mount Olive got involved through, they had a lift through the Chamber of Commerce, had a conference, and they are taking on one of the schools down in Mount Olive and with the community supporting schools with the Reading Buddy Program. So they're expanding that down there, and the University of Mount Olive is going to provide all the volunteers through their staff. So I'd like to thank University of Mount Olive for that one. In addition to that, we're going to go ahead and stay on the southern end of the county as we heard earlier with Mount Olive. I'd like to personally thank, and I'm going to go by and see him, Mr. Bill Bryan and Mount Olive Fickle Company-
Yes, sir.
-for the, taking on the, raising of the funds to participate in the Go Global NC program. And then lastly, I would like to thank you all board members. You know, a lot of people think that we meet once a, once a month and that we broadcast this one meeting. Hopefully, you guys have seen through the talking about us being in committees, that there is hours of dedication that all of you have been bringing in, in the amount that you serve your community. So I want to thank each of you for that time that you all put in here. And then lastly, I do want to go ahead and mention Mr. Latham. Mr. Latham has been out with some health concerns, and that you continue to pray for him and his recovery, and hopefully we will see him back here in some committee meetings this coming month and for our next board meeting. With all of that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Oh, come on.
Second? Oh. All in favor? Most being adjourned.